Mr. Court of Brazos County will be in regular session on February the 18th, 10:00 AM, in this courtroom, County Administration Building, 200 South Texas Avenue, Suite 106. First item on the agenda is the notification, pledge of allegiance to the U.S. Texas flag. And I'll lead the -- Father, I want to thank you for your love and your mercy. I want to thank you, Father, for all the blessings we get by living in a free country. Father, I want to thank you that you hope and pray that you will continue to protect our law enforcement and our first responders as they do their dangerous jobs. I pray, Father, that you'll be with us this morning as we make decisions for the county. Those are the best wisdom we know how. I ask all these names in Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which sustains, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. On under the Texas flag, I pledge allegiance to the state of Texas, one state under God, one and indivisible.
Thank you, Judge.
Second item on the agenda is called for citizens' input and our concerns. And we have, I believe, four. Thomas Daniel.
I present three comments related to the inner east loop highway projects. One, I ask the Brazos County Commissioners to require the environmental and design engineers to adhere to the spirit of --
Excuse me, could you speak into the mic, please?
Certainly.
Thank you.
Good morning. I present three comments related to the inner east loop highway projects. I ask the Brazos County Commissioners to require the environmental and design engineers to adhere to the spirit of environmental justice and ensure that poorer neighborhoods in culturally significant areas are not adversely impacted. Two, I ask the Brazos County Commissioners to assure that environmental and design engineers clearly identify the transportation problem to be solved and the proposed solution, including consideration of a no-build alternative. If justification rests with anticipated population growth, I ask that the Commissioners require the engineer projections to be based upon statistical probability with and without the highway. These statistical population projections should be used to evaluate solutions to immediate transportation needs versus probable needs. As a general comment, Relus Campus, Texas A&amp;M University, and Easterwood Airport are aligned along the western corridor. I ask the Commissioners to require the engineers to evaluate whether further development along the eastern corridor would create additional east-west congestion. Most importantly, I understand there are highway projects in northeastern states that are more complicated than the inner loop in areas with far greater population density. Yet, no homes were taken. If other states can design highway projects without taking homes, then I'm sure we can do the same in Texas, especially given our large pool of engineering talent. I ask the Commissioners to clearly impress upon the engineers the need to design a solution that does not take the homes of our residents. Thank you.
Thank you. Kathy Vies.
Wasn't expecting to be number two. Good morning, Judge, Commissioners. I want to start out by saying, Judge, thank you for looking at people when they speak. It's very difficult to know that we're being heard when you look down at your desk all the time, and you've been very good about that, and I just want to make note of that. I'm speaking to the court today from a 30,000-foot vantage point. And as we're all aware, the general public nationally has found their voice, as evidenced by the recent election. Locally, the public is also awakening. The first sign of this awakening was the informed group of people, including a nationally renowned election integrity expert, as well as a professor from A&amp;M, who have tried to influence the court by increasing your understanding of the current election laws. This group has come to the court countless times, brought evidence for discussion and review, and participated in meetings with this court and with the election administration officials. Even more recently, as evidence of this county awakening is the No East Loop Group. They've been organizing a PAC, publicizing public comment site, and holding public town halls. I admit that although I've been attending these court meetings for almost every week for two years, more than two years, I'm not a fast learner. Many of my own comments regarding the Sheriff's Department, the Accounting Department personnel have been taken as criticisms of those departments. In actuality, my criticisms were and are actually criticisms of this court. I understand the Sunshine Law has precluded more than two members of the court from gathering to discuss agenda items and county business. However, it seems clear to me now that no discussions are occurring prior to the Commissioner meetings. This is evidenced by a lack of answers to questions on specific agenda items. Even the information on the back page of the published agenda is unknown to this court as it clearly states that if there's an issue of fact in the public comment section that members of the court may respond. I had a number of questions about today's agenda, and Katie Connor and Marcy Turner were good enough to meet with me yesterday and answered my questions. And so I'm not going to be asking specific questions on the agenda. I will in the future, just to test you, to make sure you're reading these items, because it's your responsibility to be well-informed about the projects that you promote and the financial impact of the decisions you make on citizens you represent. It's human nature for every department in the county to make requests for their departments. Every department in the county has ideas and projects that they promote, but ultimately you have the responsibility of examining, of questioning, of taking responsibility. You answer to we, the people. Additionally, I want to remind you that it's not the function of the county government to run businesses. Running and operating a business suppresses private enterprise and bloats county government. Again, I remind you that you're elected by the people, and you're expected to fulfill your duties responsibly. This is just off the cuff. I came back from Meals on Wheels this morning, and I asked Ken, "Has anybody called from the court and volunteered an hour a month to deliver meals?" I know you meet with us here, we have an opportunity to speak, but there's people out in the county that can't come. They're the disadvantaged people, and they're in your districts, and you could serve them in their homes and hear what they have to say. It's your opportunity to reach out to people, not ask them to come to you. So just reminding you that they're there for your volunteer.
Thank you.
Good morning. I'm here in support of the No East Loop Coalition. It breaks my heart when I see people that have lived on their property for a long time or have just invested their life savings on their forever home or their retirement dream home. I personally feel your pain. The proposed 214 loop and curtain would take out six of my family's homes on land purchased by my great-grandfather in 1881. We are told that the purpose of these loops is to plan for future growth. Exactly who is predicting this growth and what data supports this report? I love this community, but let's be real, there has to be a purpose for you to live in Brazos County. I've said this, that if not for Texas A&amp;M University, Bryan and College Station would be like an episoda. If you look at the growth of our community, it hinges and is derived from Texas A&amp;M. When Texas A&amp;M started in 1876, the first enrollment was 106 students. The population of Brazos County was 11,000. In comparison, in 1876, the population of Harris County, which is in the greater Houston metropolitan area, was 22,000. BCS is also mentioned as the next Austin. Well, Travis County had a population of 20,000. So all three counties with similar populations. Fast forward 75 years to 1950. Texas A&amp;M enrollment was now 6,700. Brazos County's population was 38,000. Harris County was now 806,000, and Travis County 160,000. Fast forward another 75 years, 2025. The Texas A&amp;M enrollment is now 75,000 locally. Brazos's population is 250,000. Harris County's population, 5 million, and Travis County's population, 1.4 million. There seems to be this notion that Brazos County is the next hotspot, and all these people are going to flock to Brazos County. As I mentioned earlier, our economic engine is Brazos County. In Brazos County, it's Texas A&amp;M. There isn't a close second. A&amp;M just announced a halt on enrollment for at least five years. There are 23 Fortune 500 companies located in Harris County. In Austin, you have large companies like Apple, IBM, Dell, Google, Meta, CiscoX, Tesla, and our state government agencies. If you look at the Greater Brazos County Partnership website, our major employers are Texas A&amp;M, BISD, CISD, and the first public company, Sanderson Farms. And it goes down the list. Fuji Film and Plagen, who have less than 5,000 employees each. So again, I ask, where's all this explosive growth going to come from? And why isn't it already here, like in Harrison, Travis County? We started out nearly the same size. Let me say a quick word about our current infrastructure. In the beginning, our main thoroughfare through BCS was Texas Avenue, which is now Business 6. In the '70s, they built a bypass. So we really already have an east loop. It's called Rutter Freeway. And on 2018, on the west side, there are estimates that the population of Brazos County in 2050 will be 365,000. Now, doubling our population of 2020. Personally, I don't see that for the reasons I've already stated. Our government leadership wants to create two more loops, making our area have three loops to service 365,000 people. Again, Harris County has 5 million people, and they have three loops. Let's spend our money on improving existing infrastructure, like Reliance Road, and appropriate interchange at Highway 21 and Highway 6, and of course, support TechDOT and the building of Rutter Freeway and expansion of 1179. This will positively, will impact our community positively and without encouraging urban sprawl and taking people's property and homes and saving a hell of a lot of money for my taxpayers. Thank you.
Good. Thank you. Kyle Greenwood.
Good morning, Judge. Commissioners, how are you? Couple of points to talk about this morning. First off, this is my to-do list. I put it together weekly, sometimes daily. And when I make this list, I put my most important item at the top. I'm sure you've all seen this. I suspect maybe you do the same thing. Okay? Having established that, I have another document I'd like to introduce here. This is the bond program list, and I want to call your attention to the first item on the list, which is the inner east loop. Okay? Now, hopefully you've seen this by now. If not, here's a copy for the court. Knowing that the four of you Commissioners were not on the court when the TRIP bond was passed, I pose this question directly to the four of you. Considering that the inner east loop was the number-one item on the bond program list, why do you suppose the judge never spoke about it publicly? I've not seen everything on the internet, but I've done a pretty thorough search, and I've not been able to find anything. Secondly, many people have come up to the podium and asked the contract be stopped. I understand that you may not want to rush into that, Judge, without due consideration. However, let me make a proposal. Issue a stop work. Governments do it all the time. They pause contracts. Open it up, and let's have some public discussion about viable alternatives to an east loop. Let's really have a discussion that would benefit everybody, the No East Loop Group and those that support it, as to what are real alternatives. Show your willingness to listen to your constituents and consider their input, and give them an opportunity to not only speak to you, but hear from you as well. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you.
My name is Chris Barnes. My wife and I have been residents of Brazos County for more than 40 years. I'm not as talented as my wife, so my statements don't rhyme. Sorry for that. I want to thank you for the opportunity to speak this morning. Excuse me. I'm here to state my opposition to the proposed east loop road project and to formally request that this court cancel the contract with ITS in quiddity and begin the process of commissioning an independent study of road and traffic needs within the county. I'm also requesting that this topic be added to the agenda in the not-too-distant future of the Commissioners' Court, so that the court is allowed to respond to comments. Before I begin, I would like to take this opportunity to thank Judge Peters directly for your recent trip to Washington, D.C., where you voiced opposition to the high-speed rail project. I believe that was on KBTX last night even. While that does not traverse Brazos County, it impacts rural properties in that area, which will impact our rural areas as well. Again, I want to thank you for that trip and what you said. Last time I spoke, I had to cut my comments down to make sure I could stay within the four-minute timeframe. My comments today are more or less a continuation of my previous appearance. Before, I talked about how Mr. John Polster of ITS, in his presentations to the council, basically made a sales pitch to the company for the product he sells. That product being the ability to get state tax money brought to the county in the form of fast-tracked road projects. He's a very good salesman. That's not necessarily a criticism. People should be good at their jobs. Many of us have spoken out against the east loop project, have presented facts on why this road project is not needed. The evidence makes it very clear that the signing of this contract with ITS in quiddity was a mistake. Now, nobody likes being told that they made a mistake. The natural human reaction is to defend the decision. But making a mistake is something that we all do. It's part of being a human. Lord knows, in my personal life, I've made plenty of them. I've made financial mistakes along the way. As a young married couple, my wife and I listened to a very slick salesman and ended up with an entire set of encyclopedias, which still fill our bookshelves today. By the laughter I take, maybe somebody else has encyclopedias too. We've been tempted to buy timeshares by other salesmen. Our response is to admit that we made a mistake, correct it if we can, and move on. Saying that a mistake was made is not a criticism. We all make mistakes. Basically, that's what I'm asking the Commissioners' Court to do. There's no shame in admitting that signing these contracts was a mistake. As I said, Mr. Polster's a very good salesman. Even elected officials can and do make mistakes. The question is, what are you going to do about it? Admitting that a mistake was made by canceling the contract takes courage. At least in my eyes, it's the hero move. In the end, I believe that standing up and doing what is right will make you a better representative of Brazos County. Be the hero. Cancel this contract. I will add one other thing, that I've asked for an independent road study. Independent means that the people doing the study should not be financially involved in building the road. That's what independence means when you do a study. I just wanted to throw that out there and define what I meant. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you.
Mr. Barnes, thank you for your comments. You and I share something. My wife is certainly more clever than I am.
No doubt.
That was the last speaker. We will move to number three, presentation and discussions. Presentation and discussion of Texas Treasurer Business Award to Buddy's Supplies from Texas Historical Commission by Vicki Smith. Historical Commission by Vicki Smith. Vicki, Vice Chair of Brazos County Historical Commission. Vicki, there you go.
Good morning Judge and Commissioners.
Good morning.
The Texas Treasure Business Award presented by the Texas Historical Commission honors businesses that have served their communities for at least 50 years. This prestigious award recognizes the vital roles that these businesses play because our history depends on what we preserve today. By acknowledging local businesses now, we honor their legacies and assure stories are remembered. Since 2005, over 500 businesses have been honored for their historic significance, from well-known establishments like HEB, maybe Whataburger is on that list, to local treasures like Acme Glass and Reedfield Meats, among many others. On behalf of the Brazos County Historical Commission, I'm delighted to present Buddy's Appliance with the Texas Treasure Business Award. Established in 1960, Buddy's Appliance has been a cornerstone of our community for six decades, providing exceptional service and building enduring customer relationships. While our community has certainly evolved, Buddy Haney continues to offer that invaluable personal touch. This award celebrates your dedication, hard work, and the significant contributions made to our local economy. Mr. Haney, congratulations on this well-deserved honor.
Yeah. Thank you Vicki. Henry Mayo, Chairman of the County Historic Commission. Helen, come on up. Any, we don't, I think this is all the members of the Historic Commission we have present today. Oh, okay. There's Allison Kay. Okay, yeah. And we're so glad to be able to present this to Buddy's. We found in the Eagle, February 18th, 1972, 53 years ago today, there's a little ad up here in the corner that says, "Now in business for himself, Buddy Haney, appliance repair." So it was just coincidence that this is presented on, on that same date from that ad. I'm sure it ran several times, but I was going to say, the front of the Eagle had some of the same issues of today about voting machines and different things. Didn't have the East Loop in there yet.
That's discouraging. That's very discouraging.
I guess we can get a photo up up in front.
No, I just want to thank each and every person that was involved in getting us to this situation or meet at this. I'd like to thank everyone in the Brazos County and the Commissioners and the Historical Society for getting me to this position. Without all of the people here and all of the people that have trusted in us through the years, we would not be here for this length of time. And we certainly hope to stay for a lot longer. And thank y'all again.
Most of the grandchildren, great grandchildren are either in school. Other than that, I occasionally get by myself. But with that in common identity, that is for sure. And thank each and every one of y'all. I really appreciate everything that you've done for us, kept us in business for as long as God finished. Thanks again.
So we'll move on to number four. Consider and take action on Agenda Item 4321. Number four is Proclamation 25-012 for claiming and celebrating the Friends of Bryan College Station Public Library System 70th Anniversary. Move for approval? Motion made and seconded. Discussion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? And we've got, I think, Beatrice Saba? So I'm going to first read the proclamation. Whereas the Friends of Bryan College Station Public Library, Friends, was founded and established in 1955 as a nonprofit organization to support the community libraries Bryan College Station. And whereas the purpose of Friends is to promote the library system, encouraging citizens to use many and varied services offered by the system. And whereas Friends heightened the community awareness of the library's resources, services, and development efforts to build long-term library support. And whereas 2025 marks the 70th anniversary of the establishment of Friends, and they wish to celebrate this milestone with many festivities and programs throughout the year, including one during National Library Week on April 8, 2025. And whereas Brazos County, the library system and library advisory group recognizes and appreciates the 70 years of contributions and support to the library system and by Friends. And whereas contributions in support of the Friends have enhanced and improved the services program and functionality of the library. And whereas all citizens are encouraged to support, show support for Friends by becoming members and participating in future book sales. Now therefore, the Commissioners' Court of Brazos County does hereby proclaim and celebrate Friends for Bryan College Station Public Library System 70th Anniversary.
Let's make a pyramid.
Thank you all very much. Congratulations on 70 years. Congratulations. You're welcome. Thank you.
We did take a vote on that. Okay. So we will move on to number five. Approval requested from veteran service officer for acceptance of $500 check donation from St. Joseph Hospital of Common Spirit to be used for veteran resource fair. Move for approval? Sorry. No, you, General. Go ahead. Second. Motion made and seconded. Discussion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Non-motion carries. Number six is approval requested from veteran service officer for acceptance of $425 C&amp;J barbecue gifts for veterans in need of assistance donated by Constable and Veteran Donald Lampe. Move for approval?
Second.
Motion made and seconded. Discussion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Non-motion carries. Number seven is approval of issue, to issue a Diners Club credit card for emergency management coordinator Jason Ware with a limit of $1,000 for travel and conferences and training. Motion made and seconded. Discussion.
Judge, I haven't seen a Diners Club card since the 80s. Where, where is he going to go to get this used?
I know we have them, but I'm not really sure why we have Diners Club.
Yeah, he might want to trade this in for a Visa or something.
Charles, you got any comment on that? There may, I'm sure there's a good reason why.
Diners Club International.
It is still accepted at motels everywhere. That limits us to no more than like $35 a night or something like that, but we are evaluating other credit cards in the future.
We do. Yeah. Let's talk about this. Does Jason know this?
That's a joke. Jason's able to defend himself pretty good. We may go to 40, but.
Yeah.
Did we vote on that? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Non-motion carries. Number eight is approval requested from Human Resources to write off outstanding account receivable with $783 amount is believed uncollected. Motion made and seconded. Discussion.
So the only question I had on this was, do we not have the ability to garnish their pension, to recover that, those funds? Or is that not? No?
I don't think so.
Okay.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Non-motion carries. Number nine is approval requested for Fleet Services to purchase half-ton truck. This purchase will be a rest, replacement, replacement for asset VEH 0000003, which is a 2010 Chevy Colorado with, with facility services and is classified as a total loss resulting from an accident. Move for approval?
Second.
Motion made and seconded. Discussion.
Judge, I just want to say something about, about Colwell Country, because, because you know, I really like to do stuff locally if I can, but let me tell you about this company. They are the largest fleet dealer in the United States. They, they hold contracts for every agency in the state of Texas, including DPS, Wildlife, I guess, I guess our sheriffs, all the sheriff's vehicles come from there. And they sell their vehicles at invoice, less the whole back, less any, any factory sentence. They make all their money on, listen to this, putting all 50 lights on a police car when you get pulled over at night and you get blinded by the, by all the lights on the car. That's where they make all their money. And they, they do it for, for the entire state of Texas. So just wanted to, just for FYI, this is a good company.
Okay. Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Non-motion carries. Number 10 is approval amendment number seven for 25-001, our pest control services requested by Facility Services to add Roden Bridge Building Number Two back to the contract. It was removed when the building was going to be destroyed, but now it's going to be used for Roden Bridge offices. Move for approval?
Second.
Motion made and seconded. Discussion. All in favor, say aye.
Judge, can I, can I get Charles to answer some questions for us? Here he comes. Hi.
Good morning.
I love the fact that it's a local business, but my only question is, the contract was dated 2020. Have we not gone out for bids from anybody else since, since then, or?
Typically, our contracts involve like an initial two-year period or three-year period, and then they have one-year annual renewals. And so we typically have an expiration of no more than five years for that contract. And so this is probably going to be coming up for bid in the near future. We just need to, because facilities, or we took that building off because it, again, it was going to be demoed, now it's going to be temporary facilities for Roden Bridge while their building is being renovated. But we do bid those out typically no more than about five, every five years.
Okay.
And sometimes a little bit sooner, depending on the nature of the contract. I mean, they have some upfront cost in learning and equipment and so forth.
That's great. Thank you so much. And you've got a lot of local, local businesses on this agenda today, so thank you.
It's our pleasure.
Okay. We have a bit voted on that. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Non-motion carries. Numbers 12, 11, okay, 11. Approval requested from Purchasing Department for the attached amended tabulation sheet to correct worded vendor for line 12D on bid 25-073 various aggregate for Roden Bridge Department. The primary award was $80,000 delivered to yard, should be Rock Ridge Transport, and the secondary should be statewide material transport.
Move to approve?
Second. Motion made and seconded. Discussion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Non-motion carries. Number 12 is permission to advertise for bid 25-098 hydrated lime. Move for approval?
Second.
Motion made and seconded. Discussion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Non-motion carries. Number 13 is approval renewal bid 25-099, our printing recommended award to the following. Tops Printing Inc., DBA Agrographics, BCS, items 1 through 63, 79 through 240 and 247. P NTEG, DBA and Enderton Group Inc., items 64 through 78, 241 through 246, 248 through 268, and 271 through 279. And at C is no award, items 269, 270. Move for approval, A through C?
Second.
Motion made and seconded. Discussion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Non-motion carries. Number 14 is permission to advertise for the following RFQ, CIP 25-564 Architect for Building Maintenance for County, Brazos County Expo. And B, CIP 25-565 Construction Manager at Risk for Building Maintenance for Brazos. I'll cut off before I get through the rest of it. Move for approval, A and B?
Second.
Motion made and seconded. Discussion.
Judge, the only thing, I understand that this needs to be done, that needs to be some, some work done out there. But at some point, you know, we need, we need to talk about the 1.2 million dollars that they lose a year. And whether it's, we need to adjust our rates for the people that, that use our Expo Center, or we need to get a corporate sponsor for one of the buildings out there. I just hope in the near future, we can discuss that as a group.
Got a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Non-motion carries. Number 15 is approval of following committee for RFQ, CIP 25-564 Architect for Building Maintenance for Brazos County Expo. And CIP 25-565 for Construction Manager at Risk for Brazos County Expo. Motion and second for that list. Motion to approve?
A through F.
Second.
Motion made and seconded to approve, A through F. Discussion.
Judge, I'd really like to see, and I think I'd like to make a motion to amend this. If we're not statutorily restricted from doing so, I'd like to see someone from the Brazos County Fair on this committee and someone from the agriculture community. Because they're our two largest users of the Expo, and I'd sure like them involved in making sure what we're doing will not interfere with their main events that they have out there.
Certainly. Commissioner, Ms. Jack Foster is, I think, has, in some way, her title involves responsibility for the Brazos Valley Fair. And then as far as the ag community goes, the contractor, the architect, they will be made very well aware from upfront that the schedule for the Expo, our goal is to have minimum impact on that, so that we don't wind up affecting things that will be done when those areas. It'll be difficult. It'll be very challenging. That's part of the reason why there, there's value in doing the Construction Manager at Risk, so that they can understand from the beginning and help advise the design team to make sure that those activities will not that those activities will not, or will have minimal impact. I can't say that they will not have any impact, but to try to minimize that.
Is there any reason we couldn't add them to this list of, uh, committee?
There's, there's, we'd be happy, if you want to table this or so forth, we'd be happy to add someone from the ag community. Again, would Ms. Foster suffice for as a representative of the Brazos Valley Fair? Because she is, I believe, her title includes the General Manager of the Brazos Valley Fair.
Well, I'd, I'd like to move to amend the committee to add two voting members, one from the ag community, one from the Brazos County Fair Association.
So there, those are two separate entities, Commissioner?
Yes.
The Brazos County Youth Livestock Show is separate from the Brazos Valley Fair. Is your intent one or the other?
Well, who?
The Brazos Valley Fair is the one, the big one in the fall and in October.
Yeah, the, the Fair Association.
Yes, sir.
So, I'd clarify, you want Jack Foster's General Manager of the Fair, but you were saying an additional person from the fair?
Additional, yes, two, additional two people, one being from the agricultural community, maybe the, the committee that sits on, that does the ag business, ag breakfast every year, the second being the Brazos Valley Fair Association, I think it's Association.
It's, it's, it's the Brazos Valley Fair, I don't know what the legal name, Jack?
We have, hi, we have the Brazos Valley Fair, and we also have the Brazos Valley Fair Board. So are you talking about, we have two employees currently for the Brazos Valley Fair, but then we have like 12 members for the Fair Board.
From the board.
So you're interested in having somebody from the board?
Yes.
Okay.
No, we'll bring this back, unless you just don't want them named in particular.
Yeah, I don't think we have to bring it back. I think if we just put a.
The only reason I ask, Commissioner.
Placeholder like you have for legal and purchasing.
The only reason I ask is because your request previously was to name them and their title and their affiliation with whoever they're affiliated with, whether it be a county department or whatever, so I just want to make sure that we stay in compliance with, with the court's request.
I'm fine with making a motion to amend this, to add two voting members, one from the Board of Directors from Brazos Valley Fair, the second from the agricultural community, and it can be, obviously, you're talking about trying to get a volunteer, so I don't want to limit it so much that we can't get somebody on there.
Yes, sir. We have a few contacts with the ag community.
Okay, I'll second that. Okay, and so that, motion made, seconded. So we won't bring it back, we'll just add that to the list, and then you'll.
Yes, sir.
Get two, okay, all right. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? None motion carries. Number 16 is Approval of Final Plaid of Southern Point Section 203, 23.5, 89 acres, Sterrett D. Smith League Survey, A210 City College Station Extraterritorial Jurisdiction, Brazos County, Texas, site located Precinct 1.
Move to approve?
Second. Motion made, seconded. Discussion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? None motion carries. Number 17 is Consider Take Action on Wildfire Energy Utility Permit to Lay a Temporary 12-inch Polyurethane Line Within the Rightofway of Sims Lane Cut-off, 2,400 feet from Mumford-Vensley Road for a 50-foot near Sadsbury Road intersection to Supply Water for Oilfield Activities in the Area Site Located in Precinct 4.
Second.
Motion made, seconded. Discussion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? None motion carries. Number 18 is Tax Refund Application for the Following. Move for approval, A, B, and C? Motion made, seconded. Discussion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? None motion carries. Number 19 is Budget Amendments FY 2425, Budget Amendments 18.01 through 18.04. Move, second. Motion made, seconded. Discussion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? None motion carries. Number 20 is Personnel Change Status. Move for approval?
Second.
Motion made, seconded. Discussion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? None motion carries. Number 21 is Payment of Claims. Claims to be paid by Brazos County 8207968 through 8208100 and 9203484 through 9203565.
Move to approve, A and B?
Second. Motion made, seconded. Discussion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? None motion carries. Number 22 is Acknowledgement of FY 2425 Budget Taxuals by Fund as of February 12th, 2025, and an Acknowledgement of FY 2425 Contingency Act Budget Taxuals by Fund as of February 12th, 2025. And 23 is Juvenile Directors' Report on Detention Population.
Good morning, Judge and Commissioners. We have 36 in detention, 25 males, 11 females, and 44 on electronic monitor. Thank you.
Thank you. 24 is Surest Report on Inmate Population. Sure.
Good morning, Judge. Commissioners, 766 this morning, 652 men, 114 women, we have 47 on monitors.
Okay. Thank you, Sure.
Judge, if I could interrupt. There's some concern about item number 15, that you voted to accept the amendment, but we didn't actually have a vote to accept the motion as amended, which I, I'm sure that was your intent.
Okay.
So we, we have a motion, we've accepted the amendment.
Yeah, you're right.
Thank you.
You're right. So we voted on the amendment, so now we need to go back and vote on the original motion.
As amended.
As amended. Motion to approve item 15 as amended by Commissioner Nettles?
A through F.
A through F?
Second.
Adding two? Motion made and seconded to approve the original agenda item as amended. Further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? None motion carries. Thank you, Counselor. Number 25 is Announcement of Interest Item as Possible Future Agenda Topics. If you, if you haven't taken a look at the weather forecast, please do so. We're in for a cold snap.
Yep.
So I'd like to recognize Pam Robert. She held the first-ever Veteran Resource and Queens Clinic yesterday out at the Brazos Center, and thank you, Judge, for comping that space for them, but they had 72 vendors out there, which for a first-time event.
Wow, that's crazy.
Is absolutely incredible, and she truly is a rock star. We had five veteran service officers from all the counties around us, and they did a tremendous job at reaching out to help our veterans, so.
Right. I want to, I want to say the same, recognize the same thing. I also went out there, I was really impressed with the job that she did. She has just been a wonderful addition to our, to the county staff to be our veteran service officer, and what she has done is just amazing, and you know, I just got ringing endorsements from different people who were very pleased to also come out and serve our veterans. So, you know, when we have these events, I encourage you just to stop by and see what's going on, but it was a phenomenal event. She did a wonderful job, and I was amazed at the number of vendors and the different resources that she had, you know, to help with, you know, for possibility of addressing any issues they had, from stress to spas to, um, other healthy related issues. There were a number of vendors out there, and they did, it was just a wonderful event.
So I'd also like to recommend, maybe we have Jason Ware come talk to us. He has a, he's our Emergency Management Coordinator. He has a program, he's trying to do outreach to get people to register for STEER. So STEER is the State of Texas Emergency Assistance Registry that's managed by TIDOM. What it does is, if you have, somebody has medical condition, they're gonna have problems evacuating, then that puts the first responders on notice, so they'll look at the STEER registry, and they'll come out and help them evacuate if there's an emergency. And so right now, 240,000 people in our county, we have 60 registered. We need to do better at that, and Jason's trying to do that, so if you have an organization that he can talk to, he's happy to do so, or just spread the word so we can get folks in this registry.
And Judge, I just wanted you to know that when we identify the two people for the Committee for the Expo, we will put those actual names on as an acknowledgement, so you will be aware of who the actual people are.
Very good. All right. Any other announcement? Hearing done, the next item is to adjourn. Thank you all.